So we're going to call our meeting to order. Testing. Testing one, two.
Testing one, two?
Thank you. So, good afternoon. The time is 4:03. We'd like to welcome everyone to our
Recording in progress.
I'll do that again. Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, November 1st. The time is 4:03. We'd like to invite everyone to our work session. Board members, all board members are present today in the boardroom. Our superintendent is present. Our executive assistant, Amanda Foster, is present. And with that, we're going to go to item B on our agenda, which is our routine board request for information. We currently have no requests outstanding other than what has been noted in the Board Connect. Are there any new requests to be considered today or added to the list today? Oh dang, I thought I got away with it. No, I'm joking. Now, we're request for informa- the this is a time for additional requests for information other than those that were addressed in Board Connect that are still some pending.
Yeah, I have a question. Yeah. I was wondering if the the district knows whether there's any kind of accounting of the hours that the SROs actually spend in ASD facilities. I'm curious how many hours they're actually in our schools, but I don't know if there's any record keeping on that.
So we can, is there another board member interested in that information? Member Donnelly?
Well, I've been visiting schools and talking to people there, and they were passing on to me that they didn't think the SROs were spending as much time there as they should or could. And since this was a very hot budget topic, I thought it might be very valuable information to this board to know how much time the safety resource officers are actually spending in our facilities versus doing other things around the community.
Madam President, if I might, I'm not interested in seconding just because I don't think that this is any longer a hot budget topic for us. My understanding is the mayor's proposed budget fully funds APD to include SROs. So I don't expect to see it in any proposed budget by administration, to be clear. So this, I think this is a conversation that no longer pertains to us from a funding perspective. But if there's concerns about where APD officers are, that's probably a discussion best addressed with, in consultation with APD. And so I just, I don't think we need to pursue it at this time, given the host of other challenges we're discussing, but that's my perspective.
Thank you. And so, oh, did you have a comment?
I didn't mean to narrow it to just the budget question, but also the safety question. Because we develop our staffing based, our security staffing, which most people don't know. The district has over 40 security staff spread out around the district. One of the factors in that, for us to know that that's adequate, is the time that SROs are spending in our schools.
And in keeping with that, if we don't get a second, it doesn't go on the RFI list. Member Higgins, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just one quickly. You know, we always knew the SROs are being assigned to a school, but they're not limited to the school. There are community involvement. And by being in the school, they've got better connection with kids, with the students. They're there, but they're not there for the 24 hours a day or the entire school day in all cases. And I haven't heard anything contrary to the fact that the administration has taken a different position on the use of the SROs. But if that was the case, it'd be a different issue. But right now, I just remind that the SROs were never assigned to the school on a continuous basis. It was to be, that would be the base, and then they would respond within the community. So they'll be responsible for that way. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Member Holloman?
Well, you leave for one minute.
Remember your name.
I, to some degree, want to back up what Member Higgins said that and I was starting with ASD about the time SROs were put in place. And the idea was never that they were on site or patrolling, or that they were necessarily assigned for safety reasons, but more that they would know the staff, know the administrators, know our policies, and be able to interact in a way that really had a better outcome for students. And so the number of hours, I think, would be misleading and not a relevant data point, whatever it turned out to be, whether they were there a lot or whether they were barely there. It just doesn't tell the story of what they're really doing. I do feel a little odd that we all go on the record for why we won't second something. I think that's a new one in Robert's Rules of Order also. But it's not, I feel like it would put a burden for somebody to record and put this down. And I do know that they come and go rapidly sometimes. So if something happens in the community, they're out the door. And the additional paperwork and accumulating this data, I don't think tells us anything valuable.
Okay. Thank you. So this item did not get a second. We did, there was a request for clarification, which we allowed. Now we're moving on. Any other requests for information? Member Lessons? And I would like to add that you don't, if you, you don't have to voice them here, you can always write them to us and write them to Amanda, but go on.
Okay. We're going to be talking about preschool in just a little bit. And I was hoping that we could see at some point some data correlating pre-K participation with improved student outcomes. And if we have seen this before, then forgive me, but I just don't remember seeing something that's showing the efficacy of our pre-K programs as it has translated over time into our improved student outcomes. And I would like to be able to use that to advocate on behalf of our students moving forward.
So could you put that in, is there anyone else interested in that information? Member Donnelly. All right. Thank you. So, Member Lessons, would you send that in writing, please? Any other requests? Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I was wondering if the administration could tell us what safety training, what additional training our district-employed safety personnel are receiving. I know everybody gets Alice training, but other than that, what are we doing on some sort of regular basis to train our security personnel? And what are the qualifications for hiring them?
Okay. Is there anyone else interested in that information? Member Jacobs. Okay, thank you. We will add that to the RFI list. And Member Donnelly, I'm going to ask you to also send that question in, so we get it right. Thank you. All right. Seeing no other RFI requests, that brings us to item C. Dr. Bryant?
Good afternoon, board and ASD community. Today we'll be continuing our discussion on budget solutions in response to our 60-plus million-dollar financial deficit. And while our research process is ongoing, the community will begin to notice a shift towards providing budget recommendations from the administration to the board for guidance and decisions over the next several meetings. So I just want to briefly state that while the decisions will be difficult, the path towards passing a balanced budget will require a number of changes and reductions across the district. For the public's understanding, these budget reductions are the outcome of declining enrollment and also unstable and insufficient funding from the state. So while ASD will pass a balanced budget in February, this is also the time for the community to advocate for sensible policies that fund our schools adequately. So when you don't increase education funding, you're cutting education funding. And that's where we've been since 2017. So on that note, I will pass it to my team.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Go to the second chart, you'll see.
Okay, on this chart, this is the same chart I briefed since the end of July, so this would be the eighth time. We've got a lot to cover in 45 minutes, so I will skip past this for today. As you look at the second chart, you'll see that today's discussion will focus in on closure plus the repurpose plan, the immersion program, some recommended changes, and recommendations for ignite. The other ones won't be covered today, but will be in follow-on meetings. If you look at the next chart, you will see the sliding scale still keeps us quite a ways from zero at this point. And we'll talk about that again on slides 12 and 14. On the next slide, you'll see that with the exception of the $16 million in one-time funds, we haven't really asked for recommendations. But as we get towards the end, you'll see the variety of topics that we'll ask for agreements with the board, decisions. You know, things can always change between now and February, when we actually brief it, to include a governor's budget and all these other things that may change your minds. But we need to know something going into January as we're building the budget. So we will ask for many decisions in the next three board meetings. And if you go to the next slide, I'll hand off to Shannon Bingham to talk about the current plan for repurposing closed schools.
Thank you, Jim. Well, good evening, everyone. So the six recommendations there continue to stand. We've done a significant amount of research on these. Beginning Sunday morning, we were out in buildings, continuing to do feasibility on viability of what we're proposing here. You can see the first building mentioned there is Abbott Loop. We are proposing the relocation of the students that reside north of East 88th Avenue to Cassoon. Students south of East 88th would go to Trailside. Birchwood ADC, we are proposing that the majority of the gen ed students would be assigned to Homestead from that building. You're also seeing a proposed repurposing there for that building as well. Moving on to CLAT, you're seeing the proposed basically division of that attendance area into two halves. The students that reside north of Minnesota Drive in Diamond Estates would attend Campbell. And that was one of the schools that we spent a significant amount of time doing feasibility on in recent days. And finding a very receptive home at Campbell for the Diamond Estates children. Those children are actually four miles from CLAT currently. So this would be a significant change for those children regarding their proximity to Campbell. The other south half of that attendance area would attend Ocean View. Nunaca Valley, you can see we're proposing Chester Valley and Russian Jack with Boniface as the major divider. Of that, Boniface is a five-lane major arterial street, so we believe that we're looking at a fairly logical division of that attendance area between those two school communities. Many of the schools that are over on the right become two-and-a-half or three-round schools, so they will have significantly increased student body and staffing scales. So there will be a lot more professionals in each one of those buildings to address child needs as we go forward with larger faculties. Looking at Northwood, you're seeing our proposal there is for predominantly Lakewood. There would be a little bit of boundary adjustment for the Lakewood boundary. And then finally, you're seeing Wonder Park divided between Willowah and Tarmigan, with the majority of the children being reassigned to Willowah. We've spent a significant amount of time exploring special education placements for students associated with Wonder Park and Willowah and feel we've put a significant amount of work into researching that, and that effort continues. So those are the six school closure recommendations for round one that are on the table.
The next page addresses the repurposing plan, next steps.
Did you, did you want to take questions now or at the end?
I'll do whatever the pleasure of the board is.
Thank you, Madam President. The schools that have been identified here, most, well, quite a few of them are Title I schools. And the question's been posed to me, what is the impact upon our district funding if these Title I students go to a school that currently isn't Title I?
I can answer that. So our total number of economically disadvantaged students doesn't change. What does change, so our pot of money, total pot of money based off the economic disability would still be the same. But when we did the analysis just this morning, there's one of them, Campbell, would become a Title I school, assuming all things stayed the same as this year when Diamond Estates goes on, and some of the others don't. And for several years, there's been one more mechanism to take care of economic disadvantaged students besides the title funds. All districts have the opportunity, if they start at the start of the budget build, and decide that they are going to use general fund money for economically disadvantaged students in non-Title I schools, that a separate pot of money can be set aside to take care of those students. And as we get into December, and as we get ready for the January budget build, that's certainly something that Andy and I have been thinking about in order to make sure that we do focus on those students who moved. And we work with the instruction side to make sure that the resources are needed at those schools.
Just a clarification? So is the money the district would be receiving equal using that system, the individual student system, as if those schools they were moved into are also classified as Title I?
Right. What will actually happen is if there's four or five less Title I schools, then every remaining Title I school would actually get a little bit more money because the total pot stays the same based off the economic disadvantaged status or direct cert, if you're looking at it from the state. So we'll be able to take care of it. What we do is have a cutoff on a certain percent. We say these are going to be supported by Title I money. But the district gets this, in fact, it's the instruction side that sets that percentage for what is a Title I school for funding purposes and what isn't. But more importantly is the broad level of flexibility we can create by making it part of the plan upfront to put some general fund money in order to make sure that we're supporting those students in a different way. And one thing I would like to point out is charter school APCs, we're just notified about maybe in the last 15 or 20 minutes, that they may go to these locations. So as part of the recommendation, it is that these charter schools may go to those locations. We have a great deal of work to do with them. We've only talked to the principals as opposed to the rest of the schools in the district where we've been able to work with principals from both gaining and losing schools. And then the other piece I wanted to point out, and Eric will be talking a little bit about pre-K academies in depth over the next several weeks. But we really wanted to focus on the board's goal of reading. And in the middle of all these things, that doesn't look like a positive step forward, we wanted to make sure that we could have these two sites where we increase the possible chance that specialists and other things, other resources would be available for these groups of students. Because as some board members have pointed out, you don't forget about the board goals just because you're making reductions. And that's why we're recommending to stand up two pre-K academies.
Thank you. Member Lessons?
Old habits die hard. So I just wanted to clarify. So if a student is moving from a title school to a non-title school as part of this, ASD has essentially one giant pot of money that it receives for economically disadvantaged students. So we would be able to compensate for the lost and per-student funding as it moves, as that student moves from school A, which is Title, to school B. And I'm
So one thing people don't realize, because only if you live in the money and Title I world, would you even know it, is that when we stood up East and Bartlett as Title I schools, all of the elementary schools lost money because it was the same pot of money. The bulk of these schools maybe can hire one FTE or a little bit more, but a lot of it goes to supplies and other stuff because East and Bartlett was such significant needs and such a larger population than many elementary schools. Actually, the amount, the slice that went to them was large enough for them to make several improvements, but it did, in fact, reduce the overall pot of money, which made the amount available for elementary schools smaller. So as we look at setting aside general fund money for the purpose of taking care of economically disadvantaged students, we will go through many iterations of planning. Right now, we're not at that level. There's so many decisions that have to be made between now and December 20th that we need to wait till we find out how many things the board disapproves or approves before we can even do the work. So it's just premature. We can definitely brief you in February as we knew what we walked into. We know what the plan is. We give you some acknowledgement that this is our way ahead in order to try to take care of economically disadvantaged students. But then as we start building the budget, we'll come out with an actual plan. But everything we've briefed you, nothing really has been decided, so we really can't even do that work.
All right. Thank you. Let's continue.
So, so on the next slide is the, starting the repurpose plan and the next steps for the repurpose plan. And the first part there is looking at charter schools and making sure the schools that we're looking to repurpose as charter schools actually fit the program. And then look and see if there's types of additional construction pieces and analysis of that that would have to go into place. Really looking to have approval or disapproval by the school leadership and APC. And like Mr. Anderson said, the APCs just recently found out about these. And then develop a relocation plan, the kind of the nuts and bolts of how that would actually move. So that's with the charter schools that would go into those schools that we're closing.
And then this is Eric Vistie, Senior Director for Elementary Ed. With the ASD preschool, we have a footprint at over 40 elementary schools, or 40 schools total currently. And we have a lot of different programs, some of which are federally funded and required, like our special education and developmental pre-K programs. We have neighborhood programs. We have Head Start migrant and a large footprint within preschool. So one of the nice things that we have at many of our schools are successful preschool classrooms. Two of them currently reside at Northwood and Nunaca Valley. Both are very strong programs, and we would like to, in fact, expand those programs into those schools and grow a pre-K academy. And with that pre-K academy, taking advantage of centralizing the support services, moving early intervention services, which is our assessment teams and that is currently housed here at the Ed Center, and being able to put those into more of a neighborhood setting within the schools to be able to reach out further for the assessment purposes for students who are in need of special education services, which will also benefit students. Also blending that in terms of multiple preschool classrooms, so it's more inclusive. Instead of being a single-source classroom at pre-K, you'd have students of the same age across different types of backgrounds and demographics. We're still doing the analysis and investigation of what that really looks like, the staffing program, the modeling, the classroom, the support pieces in there. But I think we're looking really optimistically in terms of the emphasis on preschool, which we know is both a national and a local emphasis. And we currently employ braided funding streams to be able to have the pre-K that we have right now. So there's more work to be done, including which of the final schools. But the proposal is for Nunaca Valley and Northwood Elementary School for that.
Question on this slide? Thank you. How would the repurposing of one of the schools that we may shut down into a charter school affect the potential savings from shutting down that school?
I can explain that. So by state statute, charter schools don't pay rent. But what they do pay is utilities and all maintenance costs. Until recently, charter schools weren't even placed on bonds, but that, of course, has since changed. So we do save the cost of all the staff, which is about eight staff members per school from principal down to custodian. Now, the charter school may hire any of those staff to work at that charter school, or they may find a location somewhere else. So you actually, it's higher than $500,000 per school. And I originally gave out $3 to $4 million as a rough estimate. And I did want to explain, when we talk about school closures, there were a lot of things we didn't know at the time, such as how many more bus routes we were going to need, what was the repurpose plan? Because if we keep a pre-K academy, we still pay utilities. We still pay staff that operates that school. So you have a little bit less savings on that, but you have more if it's a charter school. What we worst-cased was, because we had not done the routes yet and redone the boundaries, was an additional four element, or four school buses per elementary school at $125,000 to $130,000 each. And as it turns out, and we still have to refine it a little bit, but it looks like we only need three total buses more to be able to move the students because Shannon was able to change the zones around enough to where people can still walk to school, more than we guessed as an early assumption. So I think you're going to find the total savings would be certainly much higher in terms of additional buses needed, a little bit lower for the pre-K academies, and higher again for the charter schools. And the economic analysis will continue for the next couple of months as we get more information.
Member Higgins?
Thank you. There are two things that I focus on with these schools. And one is safety for kids, and the second one of course is academic outcomes and success of the kids. So looking at that, I look at the charter schools not built to the standards that are there to protect kids in case of a major earthquake or some other issue. And that's the big concern. So placing them into schools makes sense. I'm wondering why Aquarian wasn't looked at in regards to Northwood because you've got a lot of kids there. It's the second-largest charter school, I believe. And they're completely out of the picture. And that's a concern to me. I went and visited it. I saw we've got a bond for, you know, $7 million or something we're looking at. And given the options that are there from a safety standpoint, I would think that we would be looking at that as an option. And I'm just wondering why that's being excluded.
Okay, I think we can answer this. This is a multi-part question. One, Aquarian just put $2 million into their building from the last bond. There is a board memo tonight, which we had all openly discussed about repurposing. But when you look at the reading goal, Aquarian's doing very well right now. We know there's probably going to be, assuming the board says yes, a round two closure. And Aquarian's not, we didn't feel that they were in the most urgent need for a new building because what's next for the $4 million, if that happens, is a boiler, window, and doors. So they're still in a safe building. They've been educating there for the last several years. But when you looked at ANCCS, they were on the second floor of a high school. So we prioritize that. For Eagle, they're right there, right down the road, so it made sense to put Eagle there. And when you look at the pre-K academy, when we realized that the board only has three goals and one of them's reading, that we needed to take this opportunity to try to make one big jump, one leap in a school that already has seven pre-K classrooms, and it's doing really well. it's doing really well. And it wasn't that we didn't want to take care of Inlet View first above all others, it was that they're in a building that's functioning right now. Or, I'm sorry, Aquarian, sorry, I didn't mean to say Inlet View. That's a carryover from prior meetings. But really, that was it. We thought we needed, we have a building with seven pre-K classrooms that's functioning well, and when we prioritized a school that's doing really well against a need for more pre-K, we went for the reading goal. But I do expect to see Aquarian be offered a school next year during round-two closures, but as an administration, we didn't feel that they had first right for any specific school they wanted, just because we were recommending closing schools. And that was our logic, and that was our discussion, and it comes down to board goals versus a charter school that's doing well.
I guess my concern with that response is it focuses an awful lot upon money, how much is there and what the kids are doing. I'm focusing on safety. That quality of that school compared to the schools that we have built for kids and regular ASDs things is drastically different as I walked through it, particularly last week or week before. And just examine it, you can see, you know, quite a dramatic, you know, it's not the same thing. So even if the kids are doing good, and even if we don't have to do, you know, we put some money into it, I'm looking at the safety of kids. Who's going to survive an earthquake? How are they going to do? Our schools and our hospitals are really built to be there in case of a bad, we get the 64 quake or whatever. But whatever we get in a massive quake, and that's where my concern at, and I just don't see where, it doesn't make sense that we don't do something to the extent possible to try to make sure that all these kids are safe. And Aquarian is one that I think is being left behind, and that's a concern to me.
Well, we certainly recognize that among all the charter schools, they have a significant amount of influence in this city. So, you know, at the end of the day, we're not anti-Aquarian at all. They survived the earthquake better than many of the schools in the district. It's an old school that they need to move, but it's a balance of, is reading the priority or is it moving Aquarian? And frankly, the board gets four votes to decide any matter. We're not pushing back. It's just our logic was, we felt like we couldn't just cut and not try to make a dent in board goals. And that's why we went that way. It wasn't anti-Aquarian. It really was in the middle of doing things that caused so much angst for the community, trying to do one good thing seemed like it was worth the effort. But I understand if the board goal is not as important this year, and it becomes more important year for round-two, I don't think the administration's going to fight you on that.
And I think that is probably, the reality is, there will be a round-two, if not now, at some point. So this is not like, this work is, we're just beginning a massive amount of work and decisions. So I don't, I mean, we're not competing. I mean, we're not building up a competition among schools. We are trying to do the best we can for all schools, given the reality of our situation. So if not now, then who knows what round-two is going to look like? So I just think if, what I'm trying to do is stay focused on where we are and how we're going to navigate through it. So with the, given the time, can we get back to the presentation and then come back for another round of questions?
One last thing we would like to add regarding the repurposing programs that are identified here, is all six of these have a pretty significant early childhood component. So you'll see preschool in four of the new programs that are being relocated into the closed schools, and you're also seeing the two pre-K academies. So there's a tremendous amount of early childhood upside there in those repurposings that are proposed for the six locations.
Okay. And now, member lessons, you ready?
Maybe. Thank you. I don't know. It's still...
All right, I'll figure it out by the end of tonight. I would really like to understand the concept of a pre-K academy better pedagogically, right? Do we know, does this model exist someplace else that we know that bringing kids in, and I'm presuming that we're going to be busing these students in, right? Because not all parents are going to have the ability to drive their children to and from. If we're taking them from a neighborhood school where they might be walking into their teacher's classroom, you know, I'm thinking, well, you're going to have a diminished, you're not going to have that immediate parent-teacher point of communication on a daily basis. So there are things that are lost in this, and I think that there are things that are gained as well. And I guess I would like to understand this model better, because I'm not familiar with it.
And I could speak to it briefly, and we can bring more information to you in the future meetings also, but the Nunaca Valley and Northwood currently have neighborhood pre-K programs, which would remain there, so that we didn't add busing to that. The other piece is with our, some of our special education developmental preschool classrooms already have existing busing, so it'd be redirecting where the buses are going to and not increasing the cost to those. The piece is to make room for students who would be moving from a closure or repurpose school, going to another school may have a resulting impact in relocating that preschool classroom, which would then already have busing attached to that and sending them to a different school, which is part of the reason for having the pre-K academy and centralizing all that services. But as far as like philosophy and things like that, we can bring more information to you for that. But really, it's about efficiency and scale for us and trying to make better use of the resources so that we can serve all of our students who are coming in at between three- and four-year-olds.
Follow-up?
I'd like to add something that what Eric just said is that I've seen quite a few of these come together nationally, and I think these locations where the sole focus of the school is on three- and four-year-olds is just profound, the amount of gains that you get when everybody in the building has the same mission. So I've seen quite a few of them ranging in size from four classrooms up to eight or nine, and I've really seen a lot of collegiality, a lot of teachers there with the same mission, a lot of teams really gelling and doing a lot of good with children in that age category. I just think there are a tremendous amount of opportunities for having these sub-regional ECCs, and having two of them, I think, would be a real opportunity.
So Nunaca Valley right now, they already, they have, what, six, oh, seven, seven pre-K, okay. Yeah, I know Jack Jack went there. All right, so let's, just, sorry, a quick follow-up. Oh, you had a quick follow-up and then member Holloman.
And it's about the concept of a hub. Would there be any capital and any improvements that would need to happen? I think when I was, when I visited Eagle River Elementary last summer with member Wilson, we got a tour of the building in construction, under construction, and, right, you have little toilets, you have little sinks, things that are scaled down to a preschooler. And right now, my understanding of our elementary schools is that, you know, lots of times there are like central bathrooms, and I'm thinking about this sort of famous Tennessee preschool study and like that autonomy, especially for just those basic functions, is really important. So is there a capital?
I can answer, I can answer why six weeks ago, we asked to not make all the decisions on the $9 million in major maintenance money and not to make all the decisions on the state bond debt reimbursement, is because we knew as this was developing that we had to have a plan, we had to find out where these things could be before we could do the engineer analysis to determine what would be required to make that plan go from concept to reality. And we have several months, you will see information becoming more clear for the next several months. I tried to describe why we didn't want to make every decision as early as possible, and I think I brought up the repurpose plans and potential requirements, so we don't know them all yet, but we know that if we can save money back, if we can have some strategic patience, that there will be funding available to help us make these things true.
You did. Member Holloman?
I just wanted to touch back where you talked about the advantages of a pre-K academy, a lot of teachers in one building focused in one area. I know some people suggested that we look at dividing elementary to where we have in essence pre-K through three, and then four, five, and six in different buildings, and it won't surprise me or disappoint me at all if you say you've not looked at that. But I'm just wondering if we did begin to move to that kind of a model, does that make costs go up substantially? Can it be done for the same money? I don't think there's any savings, but...
The downside is transportation, and so I've done a lot of primary-intermediate splits, and I'm doing one right now in another district. But really, it's the national driver shortage that are really keeping us from pursuing that on a large-scale basis, because you create an attendance area that's twice the size of the original attendance area in order to capture the same number of children. So I've done a variety of them for social reasons, for ed program reasons, I did two of them in Michigan for social reasons. But basically, we're finding that the size of the attendance area doubles, and you wind up increasing the amount of transportation that you have to use to get kids who used to live in the, in a K-5 environment where the 3-5 went, they have to be bused to where the K-2 is and vice versa. So it tends to double up your transportation costs when you do those.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Tarlese Hewayne, Senior Director of Special Education. The next slide is based on consolidating the ACT program. Currently, the ACT program serves over 160 young adults, and right now, they're in about six locations throughout the Anchorage area with approximately 45-plus staff members. So the learning model includes enhancing opportunities for professional environment with peers and their community, as well as accessing training within the community and supporting the teaming model to address staff collaboration and staff shortages. Also, transportation, with public transportation access for students to be more independent, which includes travel training, as well as reducing district bus routes and costs. And lastly, training and work opportunities, our ability to partner with local businesses for vocational training, as well as accessing some work-based learning opportunities, increasing the opportunity for students to participate in our Transitions Coffee Shop through work experiences and their preferences here at the Ed Center, and also increasing our opportunity for training and potential employment as ASD-support staff members.
So the next slide addresses the town halls. Those are all scheduled, all six of them, we have two coming up Thursday and Friday evening. We have a survey in six languages that will be going live at 4:00 PM on Thursday, and we're looking forward to a one-hour experience with the faculties at 4:00 PM on those days, and then a little over an hour starting at 6:00 PM with the parents as well. So we're looking forward to those meetings, listening, recording concerns, recording ideas, understanding the perspectives of the communities that are being affected by these changes.
Madam President?
Yes, member Jacobs.
Thank you. I'm looking through the, I don't have the latest information, but I, the first glance through the work session, or sorry, the town halls that are scheduled, we don't have anything that is on a weekend, and I'm wondering if that's something that the administration has considered, obviously not doing, maybe not a second round, but can we have a weekend town hall that's centrally located for parents who...
Finance meeting, we have 12 minutes before we're out of time.
Okay. And I'll speak to that as well. I would, Madam President, if there's consensus on the board, this is good conversation, we're asking good questions. I think we might want to push executive session back a little bit. I don't think, from a virtual rules perspective, I don't think it needs a motion, but as long as there's consensus, I think we can do that too.
So when you say pushback, you mean we would go into executive session maybe 5:20?
I would support it at minimum 5:15, no later than 5:30.
All right. Is there any opposition to that recommendation? All right, thank you. So we have more time, thank you.
Okay, well, now I can answer even better. One, I think it's a great idea, and we do know that some of our virtual ones will be on weekends, but we will, it's a good question. We will, we will look at that and come back the next time we discuss this.
Okay.
And I'll be followed by Eric.
All right, so here to talk about the elementary part of the Immersion Program options. So the recommendation is through looking at our three immersion programs that are currently growing, those being the Chinese immersion program at Scenic Park, our French immersion program at O'Malley, and our UPIC immersion program over at College Gate. Our Scenic Park program is currently K through five. We'd be holding these three programs at the elementary level, which would mean they would stop at K-5 for Chinese. Immersion at French is currently in grade three, so next year, we'd be scheduling to add in the fourth-grade cohort of students at O'Malley Elementary School and continuing through the elementary model and holding it at the elementary model. The UPIC immersion program, which is currently in fourth grade, we'd be growing it into the fifth-grade classroom next year, we'd be holding it there at College Gate at the fifth grade.
And Kirsten Johnson, Senior Director for Secondary Education, carrying on the immersion options available for the board to consider. At the middle, middle and high school, we would look at immersion a little bit differently. Our, other than the three programs that Eric just mentioned, our other programs all go through the 12th grade currently, and we would propose ending those programs at eighth grade in terms of an immersion model. So they would take their immersion courses through the eighth grade, we would then do a completion ceremony at the end of eighth grade. We would also do a completion ceremony for those students that are currently in an immersion program in high school, if they are in ninth, 10th, or 11th grade this current school year. We would perform a completion ceremony at the end of this year. We would continue to award the immersion graduation cords that they wear at graduation ceremonies to all students that are able to complete their immersion program through eighth grade. We would also continue to encourage kids to participate in the SEAL of Bilingualism exam, where they're recognized nationally as being bilingual. And we would also give middle school students who participate in immersion K through eighth grade the option to bring two credits of world language to their high school transcripts so that they fulfill that often required component of high school for college applications later in their, in their student career. And then when we look into moving to high school, we would still like to continue world language offerings for students, just not in an immersion setting. So we would change our model of instruction delivery, and we would look at many AP and IB options for students. For example, at West High School, we have two immersion programs, Spanish and Russian. We would look at offering AP and IB options for students coming into their freshman year so they can continue at an advanced level of their language. If they top out at the high school level, we then are going to look at dual-credit opportunities at the university level. Some of those can be offered through online instruction as well, and we would start pursuing potential partnerships with UAA or other university entities that we could partner with to still provide opportunities for students to progress through their language learning career. And then we also would utilize our AMCS program in that same vein, so that as students are progressing, if they would like to go to the middle college, there are options on that side of things as well. We would still offer cultural trips and exchange programs at the high school level. Often, at the high school level, we are taking trips and doing different things that are not necessarily always attached to a specific course, so students would still be able to participate in those if we have a level of interest at each high school. And then, again, we would still recognize at the end of high school that immersion graduation cord, so we would keep track of those students as they move through high school and still be able to recognize them upon high school graduation. So those are some options that we can pursue if the board so chooses around secondary immersion programming.
Madam President?
Yes, member Jacobs.
Thank you for the question on this slide. We've obviously heard loudly from the community that immersion programs are popular and something that makes ASD special. that makes ASD special. When we are talking about school closures, you know, we, the conversation this year started because of a funding issue, but we're trying to do what we can to bring efficiency out of it. Which of these measures, or the entirety of these measures are being driven due to fiscal challenges? And which of these are efficiency measures, I guess? And if, if money weren't an issue, would any of these changes be proposed by administration?
As an instructional background person, if, if money weren't an issue, I, I don't think we would make these changes, but money is an issue, so it's, it's causing us to make hard choices.
Thank you.
Yes, Member Wilson.
Just a quick question on the completion of the Seal of Bilinguality. Did I hear you correctly when, when you said they, they would be encouraged to take a test to complete the Seal of Bilinguality? And, and what is the process currently? So, so how would that change?
Sure, that's a great question. The Seal of Bilinguality is something that actually ASD paved the way for in the state of Alaska. It's now actually recognized state level, at the state level for other districts as well. But essentially, the Seal of Bilinguality is an exam that measures your level of proficiency in your world language. So if you're in the Russian program, you take an exam in Russian, and it, it essentially says your language skills are at a particular level of bilinguality. And so not only are you bilingual in that language, but you can also fluently speak the language, because there is a written component and a speaking component. Students that are currently in immersion are already encouraged to take the Seal of Bilinguality program or exam, so that is actually not a practice that would change. We would just continue that practice. And actually, what, what's often misunderstood about Seal of Bilinguality is that it's open to all students, not just students in immersion. So if you come from a bilingual household, you are able to take the Seal of Bilinguality exam and have that on your transcript leading high school, whether you are in immersion or not. Or if you are immigrating from another country and bilingual, you have that ability as well. So we would essentially just continue that practice, and, and it is a measure that we can put on a high school transcript to show that that student has special skills outside of a student that is a bilingual.
So I have a question. So if I am a sophomore at Diamond High School in their Japanese, or is it, is it Japanese? Their Japanese program, what would my year look like next year? And what are my options?
Yeah, that's a great question as well, Madam President. So at the end of this year, we would complete a completion ceremony with our ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders as opposed to just 12th graders. And then next year, we would look at enrolling that student in an AP course that is Japanese. So much like if you're a freshman coming in and you begin your world language journey and you take Spanish 1, you would then take AP Japanese as, as an example of the Diamond student that you referenced. So rather than it being an embedded instruction just for immersion, you would take it like any other student taking a world language at the high school level, you just might take it at a higher level, like AP or university level, as opposed to Japanese 1 or 2, where you've not had that instruction yet.
All right, thank you. Other questions from the board? Member Donnelly?
At O'Malley, you mentioned fourth grade. I didn't quite understand that. So it would end at fourth grade? Is that what you said?
So I'm going to defer down to Eric to talk about elementary in O'Malley.
Yeah, thanks for the, thank you for the question, Member Donnelly, to the President. The, currently, we're building the French Immersion Program, so every year, we add a grade-level cohort, right? So we have a English partner teacher with a target language teacher. The O'Malley program in its, in its inception is now up into third grade as of this year. Next year, it'll be scheduled to add a fourth grade, because that third-grade cohort will move on to fourth grade, right? And then fifth grade and so on. So, so that's where, that's where the cohort would be for O'Malley next year.
So can I, I think I see Mr., Mr. Lo back there. Can I ask him a question? Mr. Lo, Brandon, is that him? I thought it was you. Sorry, put you on the spot. So I guess I want to know, since this is your passion, could you give us your thoughts on this restructuring? I mean, I'm serious. No, I'm joking. We've got to make some tough calls, and there will be impacts.
I'm not sure exactly what I can say here. I mean, obviously, cuts have to be made, and I'm not really prepared to speak right now.
Okay.
I, I guess I, could you, what exactly do you want me to say?
Well, I, I don't want you to say anything. I'm just looking for a, a, a response to the options, the future options for immersion in our district.
I think if I could just interject here, I, I think to Kirsten Johnson's point earlier, if money were no option, I don't think we'd be discussing a lot of these changes, such as ending immersion at the homage level, nor making adjustments at the secondary level. I think that's the spirit of what I would believe someone leading world languages would believe, but that, that's where we're at.
No, and I, and I do, I absolutely understand. It was not my intent to put you on the spot. I, I'm just curious, as the person who has built this, I mean.
So if we look at.
I know if we would, if we didn't have to do it, we got to do something. I know that. But what, I'm trying to find my comfort level in the something.
I guess the questions that I would ask are, and I'm not trying to be facetious here, but would we, would we exit students from school at the end of sixth grade with a sixth grade language level in English? They, they don't have the skills to be successful in middle and high school or college. They don't have the, the articulation ability, and so our elementary programs, the, the students exit speaking very well and understanding very, very well, but there are lots of holes in their grammar and in their vocabulary, especially advanced vocabulary, which is why we've developed a secondary piece all around the, the social, social studies, so that they're provided that opportunity to fill in the linguistic gaps with vocabulary that is used on a regular basis, as opposed to like math vocabulary. And so the other question that I would ask is, what would be the purpose? If, if we have, you know, our Japanese program has been around since 1989, and we are considered a leader nationally in immersion, so what would be the purpose of, say, starting a kindergartner in French next year, knowing that it's going to end in just a few years? And so I think that that's going to automatically cause enrollment issues in our current programs at the elementary level. Then I also wonder what, you know, we've got over 100 students in Japanese immersion at Diamond right now, and their language level is very, very different than a student who, who takes Japanese 1 or 2. And given the grammatical holes, I don't know that they would be successful as an AP student in ninth grade.
Yes, Member Palaman.
I would also say that the value I see in some of the immersion programs is not strictly about the ability of the students to speak, that there's a enthusiasm for it by students and, and by parents, specifically just beyond that. And, and I'd say in our future deliberations, maybe some focus should be brought on that. There's a bond between the, the programs and the families that, like I say, it goes beyond fluency.
On that same note, I would add, too, that the, the cultural competency and the intercultural competency piece, the, the things that are students are bringing into the workforce, is, is underestimated with what they are, you know, with, what they're exiting with at high school.
May I just chime in? I think, just as a follow-up, I think what would be best is that in a future conversation in the budget work sessions, that we come back with more details on what the programmatic trade-offs would be, given this proposal. But we're having this discussion because, as we've discussed in the past, there is a very rather large, high per student cost, and that's why we put this initial proposal out there. But it, it appears that there's strong interest to really understand the programmatic implications. So our deputy superintendent will work with his team to provide more information, so we're fully informed.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I know you had some early projections and cost savings, but now you've had a chance to more detailed plan as presented on this slide. What are the projected savings from this particular plan at this time?
If you look at what we proposed, it's more cost avoidance and increasing opportunities for everyone who's not in an immersion. So when you cap at elementary for those three programs, that means that in seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, you don't continue hiring more and more immersion teachers for a smaller number of students taking the programs. At high school, what Kirsten talked about the last time was that we have principals, Chiggyak is a good example, that cut other electives in order to make sure that they can provide the Spanish immersion program. So sometimes, your cost-benefit analysis is what 90% of the kids can't do in order to ensure you provide it. And in times of lots of money, those are good things. I was here when O'Malley stood up the French immersion program. It took them three years to get the board to say yes, and at the time, the administration comment was, every year, this will cost more, as long as everyone understands that's what they're signing up for, the administration supports that. And the reality is, every year, they hire more and more teachers for the immersion programs. And you've heard the teachers on the Rogers Park side, between the highly gifted and the non-highly gifted, and how frustrated they get, and you start having challenges providing and the, the personnel required for the schools. And it's, it's not bad. This is a great program, but just like school closures, where there are parents who believe that is the one school in the district that shouldn't be touched or closed in any way. Ignite, I mean, we really, you could put this on nearly everything. We've tried, most of you recall the health teacher discussion just a few years ago, or a couple of years ago, where finally, the health teachers were out until we went to an assembly member meeting, and then all 28 were back. Everything, when you have less money, is about prioritizing, and do you prioritize for the smaller group or the larger group? And we bring these up as, as the best that we could do to provide opportunities for high school students, as many of them as possible. And yes, it, it would be much better if we could just talk about how we can't figure out how to spend our money, but that's not the discussions we're having this year.
No. So I, I took us off. I'm going to bring us back on track now. Mr. Lo, thank you. I just needed to have your thoughts. Member Lessand? And then we're going to go back to our slides.
I appreciate sort of the commentary and the direction, I think, that Dr. Bryant, you were suggesting. This is a chart that folks who have taken the edgonomics training might recognize. For those of you who haven't, this was actually shown at the Alaska Law and Policy Day back in the spring as well, and it was a great revelation for me then. So I would like to see something to this effect, and I don't know whether we call it, you know, outcomes for various disinvestments, uninvestments, right? What are our expected outcomes for cutting X? What are our expected outcomes for cutting Y? And we can look at it based on the cost factors, number of students served, cost per participating student, you know? What are we gaining? What are we losing by really each of the things that you guys have laid out? But some kind of a, a chart like this, I think, would help me, maybe some of the other board members, just to really have a good lay of the land, if at all possible.
So you want something besides that little slider on the page that gives more?
Yeah, because when I think about, what is the, so if we're talking about preschool, right? You know, we, I, I understand that if we consolidate, we have more third-grade classrooms at a school because we can consolidate them, there are benefits for that, fewer splits. You get the critical mass. But maybe when you lose the preschool out of that school, you lose some relationship building, or, I don't know, I, I just, I want to understand each item, you know, what we gain, what we lose by making those cuts, given that this is the reality we're living in, not that any of us want to be doing this.
We can certainly try without setting up a test case and then the study case and putting before metrics and analysis in place. And then afterward, it's challenging to even pretend that you have all of the controlled variables and the uncontrolled variables to be able to, with any level of confidence, say, this is exactly why this one person did this. So, but we, we'll talk about it.
Right, appreciate it. All right, let's continue.
Good evening. I'm Diana Beltran, Senior Director of Teaching and Learning, and I'm here in front of you to propose changes to our Ignite program. We'd like to re-envision our support for our Ignite students, moving toward a more inclusive practice model, focusing not only on the enrichment that they're receiving now, but their academic needs. In 2021, there was a work group that worked on some Canvas, a rigorous Canvas course for our Ignite students, and so we would propose that we would use those courses five days a week through the MTSS framework model. And further, we're looking to continue with our current highly gifted programs, retaining them at, at Rogers Park, Romack, and West. The cost savings there would be approximately $3 million reduction in costs in staffing, and there would also be an elimination of bus routes that would free up those resources for other district priorities.
Okay, Member Lessand?
I caught myself. So can you clarify what I think I heard, that there's a Canvas course, and so students would be logged onto their computers to do their enrichment?
That would be one of the supports. So speaking to what Mr. Anderson was saying, is that until we know more about how the board will go with these reductions, that is one of the options that we would look at in terms of serving our students who are identified as Ignite. There would be some training involved. It, there would be a lot of things that would have to happen if we moved towards that model in working with teachers and schools and training. But that, I just wanted to, like, remind you that back in 2021, that was one of the options, and we've been looking at that now, but just projecting forward what we might need to do in this model, but making it more inclusive in terms of meeting their academic and enrichment needs.
Can I follow up? So I'm thinking about Ignite projects, like dissecting a frog, or learning to use a 3D printer, or doing things with your hand, kinesthetic things. How are those supported in this kind of a change?
That would be a possibility as well. So depending, so again, looking at the whole picture, if you're looking at closing schools, and one of the things that Mr. Benham mentioned in the past is that when you have more students and more staff in a school, you're able to provide more services for kids, and so it would depend on where we move. All the different things have to be in place for things to be able to happen in the school. So that would, that would be something we would still want to continue, but I won't know, or we won't know in my department, until we start figuring all these things
Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Ms. Beltran. I was hoping for more specifics, I guess. When we say staff production, saving $3 million, could you tell me more as to how many positions that'll include? And then with the cost savings for the student transportation, do we know how many students utilize transportation and what that will save us?
I can explain the transportation, because it's interday transportation, you don't actually save money on it. What you do is free up dedicated daily requirements of upwards of 10 buses to be able to support other activities in the past. And, and this year, when you're short bus drivers or you don't have a lot of excess, there are other activities that can't be supported except through chartered transportation, which is incredibly expensive. So it's more, it's kind of like the efficiencies you gain with elective opportunities for other things at secondary. other things at secondary. When you free up buses that can be used during the day for field trips and other activities, now you have more assets to support more. And we do have the number of personnel, but that would be on a follow-on briefing. This was the first of two. And then we'll ask for a recommend, or we'll ask for a decision in two weeks, and we'll lay out the full plan. But we knew that that one hour was not sufficient for this briefing today. So we're trying to put out the information to just kind of get through it and make sure we can give you a general idea.
Madam President, I won't ask a follow-up question, but just to follow a point, I guess, in the same way that I was in favor of encouraging the municipality to maintain the cost for school resource officers a year ago, I strongly feel like we should be moving the other way with student transportation. We should be trying to transport more students than less. And if that needs the municipality's help, we should be asking for it and putting a dollar figure there. So if, if we can put a dollar figure on, if not tonight, then in the future, what it would take to maintain that level of transportation. And then the board can work with the Assembly to, to see if we can mitigate that. That would be a data point I'd be interested in. Thank you.
So for, I'm sorry, let me just, Dr. Beltran, so for the learning model, so Rogers Park, ROMIC, and West will continue to have their programs. Are we going to increase the enrollment for those programs, or hold it as it is? Or have we not thought that far ahead?
Well, I, so we increase based on, on students qualifying to go to, and so, as a matter of fact, we were speaking about this earlier, but Mr. Gustafson was telling me that sometimes kids don't want to leave their schools to go to Rogers Park. So sometimes that's what prevents more enrollment in Rogers Park. But we do notice that when kids are moving to ROMIC, or when it's a middle school or a secondary model, they're more willing to move to ROMIC or West. But so sometimes that's what our barrier is, is that it's not that kids aren't being identified, it's that parents are sometimes reluctant to send their school, their students outside of their neighborhood school.
Okay. Yes. When, when we talk about identifying students for Ignite, for the HG program, how would decreasing the staff, because currently a portion of that staff does the work on identifying those students for, for both Ignite and, and highly gifted. I guess I'm not understanding if, if we eliminate that portion of the staff, or if that's even part of the plan, how would those students continue to be identified for these programs?
So speaking to what Mr. Anderson said about talking about the staff reductions later, we would still retain testers to make sure that students are identified.
Okay, so there'll be no change in the identification of testers. Okay. All right, let's continue.
Okay, if you look at the next slide, this slide was gen, oh, I'm sorry. This slide was generated after a discussion with board members, really talking about how did we go about going through budget reductions? There's a lot of people that, that were waiting on a lot of information on admin reductions first, and then working your way through. So I think these next two charts, hopefully graphically represent the manner and order that we've been researching and presenting our budget issues. So the first question that all of us now have been asked is why would you propose closing schools, or any other example of any type of cut that we've talked about, when the net savings doesn't provide a large percentage of what's needed for a balanced budget? So the first thing is, there's absolutely nothing in the district, any one thing, other than increasing PTR by 10, that could ever get you to doing this on one thing. So, so I built these circles and rings that, that kind of lay out going from the outside in how we've approached it. So on the first ring on the outside, you can see a lot of administrative type things. And you can also see that of our total budget, and that's both personnel and equipment, total budget, that's about 8% of ASD's operating budget. So things like utilities, school closures, we're on here for this particular discussion because we're looking at it. We've gone through contracts. We're going through every department in the administration and have been for weeks now, looking for savings in multiple different areas. And you can see that even starting on the outside, working your way in, with the exception of potentially a piece of hardware that only Mike Fleckenstein really knows what it does, you already start hitting the emotional piece. So you will talk to directors and staff and parents and kids on everything we've talked about, because that's the one thing they wake up for every day, and they're excited about, and, and we appreciate that. But when you're getting from 68 million to zero, it's almost everything you touch is that way. So we did look at school closures first, and we put significant amounts of effort in that. Then you can look on the interior ring. Now, these are those things, the programs and the things that are outside the everyday core classroom. And you start looking at this and realizing that, as we talked about hockey, I mean, we wanted to get tongue depressors before we even said the word hockey two weeks ago, because we know the kind of emotion in Anchorage when you even talk about it. Ignite, sixth grade band and orchestra, immersion, all of these are absolutely critical to one person, maybe 100, maybe 1,000. But we still had to look at those because they're 32% of our operating budget. And when you're trying to get to 68 million, you can see that if you just take gen ed and sped, direct instruction, and all the things that go into it, from curriculum to internet security, to all those things that allow a classroom to operate, that's where 60% of all our money allows those classrooms to operate. So everything we touch is important to someone, and they will have a hard time giving you their thoughts on it, except cut anything else but that. And that's been the road we've been on for the last 11 board meetings. So I was hoping that maybe this described the, the outside in. And then Andy's got a chart where he can talk about, really, where are our people in the district? So next slide, please.
So I just want to give a high-level view of, you know, what kind of went into these categories, so the three categories. And then, you know, the middle circle, that's teachers and paraprofessionals in both general ed and special ed classrooms, those directly in front of kids all day long. That outer circle, you can read this, I mean, I know we're short on time, so I don't want to belabor that. But there's a few things missing from this that it's probably more noticeable what's missing than what's there, which would be the counselors, nurses, librarians, all these staff that do have contact with students and do influence their education, but are not necessarily in front of them all day, every day. Also, other special services like behavioral health specialists, psychologists, OTPT, all those other special services that are kind of pullouts, or kind of coming into the classroom to help out those teachers. Those would be included in there. And then the outside ring, that's just our, kind of mostly just the management through this building and purchasing IT, those, those kind of functions that are not directly in those school buildings.
So as you go to the last slide of tonight's brief, I think it's the last slide, you'll see what we see between now and the end of December. So we have one more school board meeting in November. And at that meeting, we'll provide a little bit more information on sixth grade to middle schools, middle school model, immersion. We'll talk about the three-year plan to outsource sports. You really don't see any money savings for at least the first year, maybe two. And if you can't find someone to outsource a sport to, then all we're asking for is approval to move forward and try to see if we can outsource. And that would be hockey, swimming, and women's gymnastics. And then we'll also ask for a decision on Ignite. Now, I understand that asking for a decision doesn't mean that, that you don't want to push it off to December, but the more that gets pushed to December, it's just, it's just more that gets pushed. But in December, at the very beginning, the first board meeting, we'll brief the pro forma. There's been a few things that have changed. We did have more students enroll than we had originally projected. We had more intensive needs students than we had originally projected. So Andy is still working the new inbound revenue projections based off the Oasis count period, which has ended. And I think you're going to see in the six-plus million dollar range of additional revenue that we didn't plan. So that'll be in the pro forma. The 2.3 million that we didn't use on SROs, but quite frankly, we didn't know until the mayor put his proposed budget out, whether he would get us for the second half of our fiscal year or not, not he would get us, that he would recommend it, and they would have discussions. So there's a number of other things that, that have happened. So we will brief the pro forma at the first meeting, along with updates on school closure repurpose plans. We'll talk about how there's three things that are very much tied, and that's fund balance, one-time funds, which is the state bond debt reimbursement, and pupil-to-teacher ratio. Those are absolutely tied. And we will have long discussions on the linkage between those, because at the end of the day, we've walked you through these circles, there is no path to 68 million to zero without increasing pupil-to-teacher ratio. The only available funds are maximizing fund balance, which we will have recommendations when we do the pro forma, as to how much could be available for the fund balance. And then the state bond debt reimbursement funds. And then past that, at, at some point, you are now looking at PTR. And, and our discussion will be, do we look at making a commitment on state bond debt reimbursement in December, knowing that if we do, there's, there is space and time for the legislature to provide either a BSA fix or one-time money. And if that happens, those monies could then be redirected toward capital, or whether the focus is go ahead and move forward with the current plan to spend that money on capital, because it's those three in red that are the last, the last thing you look at before you know you got to get to zero. So I just wanted to throw it out there now. We're not going to go into any more in-depth discussion, but Andy and I, and, and the board, hopefully, we'll have a two-hour work session following this one, so we can really start talking about some of these in a more conversational manner, instead of the whole, the briefing thing is great, but, but some of the questions need, I think everyone needs time to, to ponder them, answer the question in the way they need to ask it, and for us to, to give a better answer than sometimes we give on short notice.
Thank you. And I, I absolutely agree. So we will plan two hours for our next meeting. Any final questions before we move into our executive session?
Madam President, I have a couple of, that's okay. Well, so first, I guess a point, I would suggest that we, going forward, I guess, we plan for two-hour work sessions. I think it just needs to be the norm. And then looking ahead of it.
Now, we can call additional work sessions if that's what the board desires.
And that, that was my, my second suggestion, I guess, is I think it's probably wise now to start planning for an extra meeting, if not this month, at the very least, next month, where it's, it's a bit more conversational in nature. So I don't know if that needs to be a work session or meeting, but I wanted to, to put my preference out there, that we bookmark that time, and we save the date on it now, so we aren't scrambling, in case we don't get business done, I mean, we need more time. I'm going to circle back to the first slide really quick and discuss regarding the repurposing plan, I guess, so it probably is in the first slide. The plan for Wonder Park would repurpose it for the ANCCS and Stream Academy. Did we look at, it seems to me that there's a potential fit at Begich, which is nearby to Stream, and serves a similar type of population. I think there, I looked at the capacity, and it seems to even match up potentially. Was that something we considered? And if we didn't, if, if we did, why?
That's a great question. Nearly everything we presented is kind of like a house of cards. If you don't do, if you don't say yes to the middle school model, then the sixth grade to middle school isn't going to happen. If the sixth grade to middle school does happen, then it cuts back other options to use the middle schools for something different. And so it, it's kind of, if, if the board knows right now that sixth grade is not going to go to middle school, then it would be a more legitimate look to look at ANCCS going to Begich, or, or Stream, I mean, sorry, at least I didn't say in my view. So that, that's really why. We started with the sixth grade to middle school because of sixth grade band and orchestra, which is 2.5 million. And to, to be able to save that, you got to get them to middle school, but you have to get rid of a middle school model that costs over $3 million. And, and everything's kind of iterative. So as the board starts making decisions, there are a lot of things that are going to fall out, that are no longer possible, based off other decisions made, yes or no, as to whether those are possible.
Thank you. That's helpful. And then can I, one additional question, Madam President, if I might?
You may.
Okay. If this is something we can't answer off the top of our heads, that's fine. Even if we were to, to cut the 68 million, a couple of folks have asked, and if it's, it might be in our documents somewhere, what's our projected deficit for the next fiscal year, based on, you know, assumptions of declining enrollment and increased costs, even after that reality?
I would feel more comfortable after we find out who got elected this year, and we see what the governor's proposed budget is. By statute, it has to be presented by December 15. I think we're going to be better, I mean, this is just an honest answer. Right now, we have no, we don't have a clear path ahead with the legislature, right? So I think after we see the governor's proposed budget, after we see what happens after November 8, I think we'll, we'll better be able to predict what we think will happen with revenue. And as far as, as projections for students, we're expecting about 2% less students next year. That part we have, what we have is that black hole between federal money running out and, and no, it's, it's premature to guess, I think, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
Very briefly, member Donnelly?
So we're going to, we're having the Birchwood meeting this week, and folks from Birchwood have expressed to me that the 51% occupancy is kind of misleading here, because they actually have a waiting list to get into Birchwood, and it was just the lack of teachers being assigned there that kept that population that low. What's your response to that?
You know, when you, when you look at the alternative programs, we still provide the same PTR for them, even if their learning model is different, as opposed to a charter school, where they take the full amount of money, and, and they can do whatever they want with their FTE. Birchwood would like a smaller FTE than the other neighborhood schools around them, in order to have more staff, so they could do the ABC program with more staff. But we, we provide resources to all of our elementary schools based off PTR. So it, it's, like, the immersion programs want more language teachers than the schools that don't have immersion. It's the same thing with Birchwood.
Okay. But I, but is there a waiting list for Birchwood?
I've heard that there is a waiting list, and I would believe it, but I don't know how much of it is space. I don't know how much of it is conscious decisions. I don't think anyone, there, there's a lot of reasons why there's a waiting list, and principals don't pull people in.
And maybe we can come back to that at a future meeting. Member Jacobs?
Madam President, well, looking at the time, I think the extra half hour was wisely used. So thank you, Dr. Bryant and team. I'm going to move that we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations, and contracts.
Okay, moved to adjourn. Any opposition? Seeing none, we are adjourned to executive session for the purpose of contracts and legal.